I now call the Eastlime Zoning Commission's regular meeting of November 7th, 2024, to order by 7:30 PM. Could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. It is black flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Peck.
Yeah.
Here, here. Ms. Markovitz.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Yep.
Ms. Kalal.
Here.
Ms. Jett Harris.
Here.
Mr. Lisca? No, not tonight. Ms. Susko? Okay. And Ms. Yuhas? Mr. Maholland?
Here.
And Ms. LaRocque. What about Ms. Hardy tonight? No? All right. Well, move along. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so we'll skip to our regular meeting. And I understand we're going to switch the order of applications. So we'll be starting with the application of J. Robert Fanner and Associates, PC, for coastal area management review for demolition of existing home and construction of new single-family home and detached accessory structure for property located at 112 East Shore Drive, Black Point Beach Club. Is that right? Assessor map 02.7 lot 17. We have a memo from Mr. Maholland?
Yes. Memo to Eastlime Zoning Commission from William Maholland, zoning official. Read coastal area management review, 112 East Shore Drive, Niantic, dated November 6th, 2024. As the commission is aware, coastal site plan reviews are state mandated program authorized in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes. This statute delegates legal authority to zoning commissions to adopt regulations -- excuse me, to adopt regulations and regulate activities not otherwise exempted occurring above the CJL or coastal jurisdiction line as identified by the Connecticut DEEP and within the defined coastal boundary of their respective communities to protect coastal resources and ensure compliance with the CAM Act's coastal goals and policies. The Board is charged with the review of coastal site plans and may approve, modify, or deny activities proposed after evaluating the specific site, considering the potential effects of both beneficial and adverse of activities on coastal resources and their consistency with applicable state coastal goals and policies. Enacting on a coastal site plan, the commission must state its findings and the reason for the decision. To approve, the Board must find that the proposed activity is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and standards and whether or not any potential adverse effects -- adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources and future water development are acceptable. In this application, Robert Fanner Associates, PC, on behalf of the property owner is proposing to demolish the existing home and construct a new dwelling in its place. The subject property is a waterfront lot located in Black Point Beach Association, which has its own zoning authority. Because the site is within the state's coastal zone, the activity requires a care and review by the commission. As a waterfront lot, the easterly portion of the property is located both in the VE and AE flood zones. This area is protected by an existing seawall. The proposed house will be constructed in the AE zone outside the VE zone area. The applicable flood zone standards for this jurisdiction are found in the town's flood ordinances. The specific zoning standards will be applied by the Beach Association zoning authority. The applicant, Mr. Fanner, will give a brief presentation and will document how the proposed project will comply with the CAM criteria. In conclusion, the Board should consider the characteristics of the site, including location, condition of onsite coastal resources, if any. The commission must find in an approval that the application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the Act and that reasonable measures to mitigate any of the adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent activities.
Thank you. Mr. Fanner, would you like to present? And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Yep. Robert Fanner from J. Robert Fanner and Associates, 37 Grand Street, Niantic, Connecticut. Sorry, I didn't bring cameras, but I thought most of you had them, but I do have it in front of me here. I'll go over with you. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. I have a pretty good voice. The lot here is located at the end of Black Point Beach, kind of a budding up to where old Black Point Beach starts. The shorefront located down here is protected by an existing seawall. The seawall is in very good condition. It was redone at some point, probably in the last 20 years. So we have a very good protective barrier there. The seawall goes from property line to property line. Within that, we also have what we call a splash pad. It's actually a large patio, almost like a patio, in front of the seawall that helps protect -- we get a lot of weight crashing over these seawalls during storm events. So that helps protect some of the erosion that we tend to get behind the seawalls when the waves crash over. We're not proposing any work in there. That is all in very good condition. So that will remain. The existing house is located approximately where this house is located. We're going to tear down the old house and construct the new house. We're moving the house back from the water some to get out of. Right now, the existing house is actually in a V-zone. It's not built to V-zone standards. It's too low. It doesn't break away walls. It's got flood vents in it. This house, again, we're going to push it back. There's several zones, flood zones in this area. We have a few V-zones, and then we have a couple different A-Zones. So we're going to push the house back away from the water to get us out of the V-zone into the A-Zone, which is a less restrictive zone as far as construction. The back of this house is actually still being built somewhat to a VE standard. We have breakaway walls located along the back of this house. It's kind of a walkout. It's not a full basement, but it's got a crawl space underneath it. They do have breakaway walls along the back, as well as flood vents in this house to meet the FEMA standard for construction. There's an existing structure up in the front here, a small garage barn structure. That's going to remain for no work. And then they're going to build an accessory structure, which is actually an apartment, which is allowed in Black Point zoning. It's a new law and a statute that was passed that allows accessory apartments on residential properties. So they're going to utilize this. This is outside of the floodplain, so that does not need to be built to any floodplain standards. It's outside of the floodplain and located above the floodplain. The driveway coming in will be a stone driveway to minimize our runoff. Runoff will run around the side of the house. The entire back of the house is all beautiful lawn. We're going to silt fence probably about 20 feet off the house. So the silt fence is running here, and then we have about another 50 foot from the silt fence to the seawall that will remain undisturbed even during construction. The rest of the site, once completed, will be put back to grass. There are some existing gardens along the perimeter, which will remain. There's landscaping along both sides. That will remain in place. The treatment of the water, we're going to allow the grass. It's a very gentle slope from the front of this lot to the back. There's only about six feet of slope from the road all the way to the seawall. Very gentle slope. Then there's some -- we've got, again, we've got a walkout, so we've got retaining walls on the side, so any drainage that does get will come around, and then we sheet flow over towards the Long Island Sound. Again, during construction, we'll protect it with the silt fence, so nothing can get through there. We've probably -- we've increased by about 1,300 square feet, the total coverage, with the addition of this building and the increase in the house there. But again, with the very minimal slopes we have here, we've got very good soils in this area. They're very sandy gravelly soils in this area, so we get very good infiltration into the ground. So even the runoff doesn't tend to accumulate. It actually does run in the ground. But anything that does runoff, we've got a very good area for it to be treated for use of the water. I think in the packets that you have, there are some plans of the house that show, and I can give you, there's some 3D renderings there that show you the slope of the land there just around the house where it slopes down to the water. Again, some of the water is here, dropping down about two feet. Again, the resources that we do have there to this side, there's actually a beach, kind of elevated up a little bit, and then it actually -- so you'll see there's a set of stairs here from the seawall. So this is a sandy beach on this area. Then there's another set of stairs in the middle where it drops down a little lower, and this is more of your rocky shorefront.
And I'm going to interrupt here. That's part three on the application, if you're following along, coastal resources. Just Bob's talking.
So again, all of our resources are down, obviously below the seawall, and we're proposing absolutely no work down that area. Through the protection of the silt fence during construction, the grass and landscape areas our runoff is treated prior to entering into the Long Island Sound.
Can you run through the use policies briefly and the potential adverse impacts, so we can flush out the record?
Sure.
That's going to be on five.
So again, the biggest potential we have for impact here, obviously during construction, is any silage that we have during construction that could runoff to the resources. Again, we're minimizing any impacts by creating a silt fence barrier from up the sides, all on the back, so that any water that comes through this site has to go through the silt fence prior to getting to any of the resources down below. Once the site is -- once the construction is completed, all the dirt areas will be replanted with grass and topsoil stabilized prior to any of that silt fence being removed, thereby eliminating any major sources of silage. Again, the driveway, which is back to the other plan. The driveway coming in here will be a stone driveway, so we don't have major amounts of runoff coming from the driveways. It's a stone, which also will help infiltrate the water on the driveways into the ground. Driveway, especially large circular driveway, tends to be a very big source of runoff. So by doing these out of stone, we're limiting a lot of that runoff. The roof leaders will come down and exit there, just a simple splash pads allowed, again, to run through the lawn, so we're not point discharging them through a pipe system or anything like the Long Island Sound. They really don't like us to point discharge anymore in the Long Island Sound, so we're trying to heat those by letting it just run through the racks before entering into the Long Island Sound.
Do they have a requirement for that distance, the Long Island Sound? They don't want you to discharge? I'm just curious. Is there a foot requirement that you have to have?
Well, I mean, typically, like on these lots, we would discharge through the seawall. We would actually put a pipe discharge. So there's not really a set distance depending on the layout of your lot. They just don't like point discharges.
I'm confused.
Yes.
Didn't you say that there's a patio in front of the seawall, so that when the storms come, they're going to splash on the patio?
Yeah, it's about a 10-foot patio, but then again, there's another 50-foot grass.
Of what material?
The splash pad.
The patio?
It's concrete.
Concrete?
Yes.
What is the area of the roof for runoff?
The area of the roof, same as the area of the house, which... So the existing house, or the new house proposed is -- I'll try to pull this together. The new house is 2,184 square feet. The existing house prior was 1,441.
And you've been to Black Point zoning with it already?
Yes, I also actually do have, which I will submit to the record. I have our approval from Black Point Beach Association. I should have been smaller.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
So yes, we did go through that process with it already, and I do have approval for the demolition, as well as the demolition.
You said the driveway was stone?
Yes.
What kind of stone?
Crushed stone.
What size?
I don't believe they specified, but typically, they do a 3/4-inch crushed stone, smaller size.
Are you having to replace the septic tank, or is that...
This is on sewer.
On sewer?
It's on sewer bar.
Oh, good.
So we're just going to reconnect. And we already have, obviously, there's an existing house there, so we already have connections there.
Okay.
We will cut them back from the existing house and then reconnect once the construction is completed.
Just out of curiosity, because this is so much larger than the existing house, do you need extra sewer capacity from the town?
No. They don't get any sewer capacity with residential uses.
Man, this thing's gigantic.
The area needs to be moved, that's gigantic, actually. I agree with this big house, but for most of the houses down there, it's about bar.
Any other questions?
No.
Do we have a motion then?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion to approve the application of J. Robert Fanner and Associates, PC, for coastal area management review for demolition of existing home and construction of new single-family home with detached accessory structure for property located at 112 East Shore Drive, Black Point Beach Club, Assessor map 02.7 lot 17. Reasons: The applicant is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the CAM Act. The applicant has taken all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent uses.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain?
I abstain.
It passed 5:01.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we have the application of Keith Nielsen, PE of Daco Incorporated, agent for Craig Hocker, for coastal area management review for site plan for new landscaping walls for property located at 58 Shore Road, Niantic, Assessor map 08.4 lot 58. I believe we have three memos to read.
I can read one if you need me to.
Let me get started here. Memo to Eastlime Zoning Commission from William Maholland, zoning official. Read coastal area management review, 58 Shore Road, Niantic, dated November 7th, 2024. As the commission is aware, coastal site plan reviews are state mandated program authorized in Chapter 444 of the Connecticut General Statutes. This statute delegates legal authority to zoning commissions to adopt regulations and regulate activities not otherwise exempted occurring above the CJL or coastal jurisdiction line as identified by the Connecticut DEEP and within the defined coastal boundary of their respective communities to protect coastal resources and ensure compliance with the CAM Act's coastal goals and policies. The Board is charged with the review of coastal site plans and may approve, modify, or deny activities proposed after evaluating the specific site and considering the potential effects, both beneficial and adverse, of the activities on coastal resources and their consistency with applicable state coastal goals and policies. Enacting on a coastal site plan, the commission must state its findings and reasons for the decision. To approve, the Board must find that the proposed activity is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and standards and whether or not any potential adverse effects of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water development are acceptable. In this application, Keith Nielsen, PE of Daco Inc., is proposing to construct a landscape wall on the south side of the existing home to grow and retain dune grass. The existing rocky shorefront on the south side will be enhanced with stone to help attenuate typical wave action to minimize erosion. Further, Mr. Nielsen is also proposing to place 40 linear feet of new armor stone above the DEEP coastal jurisdiction line, CJL, suddenly of the building running north-south. The applicant will give a brief presentation and will document how the proposal will comply with the CAM criteria. I note that our deep CAM contact has retired and has been replaced by Karen Michaels. Ms. Michaels has provided a site plan review comment letter, which is in the commissioner's packets. Ms. Michaels has expressed several concerns about the project in her comment letter, which will be found -- which will be read into the record. Mr. Nielsen will respond to the issues during his presentation. In conclusion, the Board should consider the characteristics of the site, including the location and condition of onsite coastal resources, if any. The commission must find in an approval that the application is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the Act and that all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent activities.
Okay. Next, we have a memo from deep.
I'll read it.
Oh, thank you.
Please. Eastlime Zoning Commission, care of William Maholland, CEO, Eastlime Zoning Department, Town Hall Appeal Drawer 519, Eastlime, Connecticut 06357. CSPR comments for 58 Shore Road, revised application. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying this office of the revised coastal plan application. Submission for the proposed project at 58 Shore Road. Acting as a Commissioner's staff, the Land and Water Resources Division, has reviewed the CSP application for consistency with the policies and standards of the Coastal Management Act, and our review continues to raise several concerns with respect to several relevant policies of the Act. The applicant should reconsider the need for walls and riprap and establish a standalone dune system as a feasible, less environmentally damaging alternative to constructing walls and a line of stone riprap, and we offer the following comments for the commission's consideration. The site is located within a FEMA delineated VE 14 flood zone, and a site visit conducted by deep staff on August 27th, 2024 indicates that the existing single-family home is supported by a concrete patio seawall, which is further reinforced with riprap at its foundation. Sand and American beach grass are both abundant at the west side of the property, both of which are indicators that the site is subject to net aggregation...
Accretion.
Accretion, thank you, not net erosion. The revised application for the proposed project has addressed some of our initial concerns. For example, several lines of snow fencing within the southern portion of the property have been proposed in place of a sheet pile wall. However, the revision has not met the CCMA criteria that could allow the proposed low-profile walls and a riprap reinforced concrete wall at the existing Cobble Beach, all of which remain project elements. It also appears that the new riprap is proposed to tie into the existing unauthorized riprap on the property. When located within the FEMA delineated VE zone, even low-profile walls and ripraps such as that still proposed meet the definition of a shoreline flood and erosion control structure because the primary effect of these structures is to control flooding of erosion from tidal coastal or navigable waters. Connecticut General Statutes, Section 22A-109C. Therefore, the only conditions under which such structure can be approvable are that a house built before 1995, not the property, is being threatened by erosion, and there is no feasible, less environmentally damaged alternative, and all reasonable mitigation measures and techniques have been provided to minimize adverse environmental impacts. CGS Section 22A-92B, 2 and J, CGS Section 22A-92E defines feasible, less environmentally damaging alternative to include elevation of an inhabited structure and restoration or creation of a dune and defines reasonable mitigation measures and techniques to include beach nourishment. The dwelling has already been elevated, thus not threatened by flooding or erosion, and our office continues to support the establishment of a dune on the property without the walls and riprap.
Do you want to take that one? Sure. While the project is now being described as a dune restoration project, LWRD's habitat restoration specialist reviewed the CSP and indicated that dunes generally do not need walls in order to form or to maintain themselves. We note that portions of the site already support two dunes, and as such, the use of concrete walls, even low-profile, and riprap appears to be unnecessary to help establish a dune closer to the water's edge. Dunes can mitigate landward and migrate landward in times of rising sea level and as a result of storms, but preventing migration of sand into the pond offset is not an adequate justification to construct walls on the property. Sandy washovers resulting from storms can help marshes maintain elevation and also provide critical habitat for shorebirds. The application does not contain any specifics as to the type of dune grasses, number of plantings, or the total amount of fill, if any, that would be necessary to develop the dune. We note that the applicant's consultant has not reached out to our habitat restoration program for assistance in designing the dune. In addition, the proposed riprap along the Cobble Beach would be located immediately landward of the coastal jurisdiction line. Although no height, size, or total estimated amount of proposed stone has been provided by the applicant for this feature, it appears that any riprap placed on the Cobble Beach would be excessively structural for protection of a dune. The riprap is described in the application as shoreline protection and a deliberate feature designed to disperse and attenuate wave energy prior to its contact with the property. Page 2, Paragraph 2 of the consultant's narrative. Again, shoreline flood and erosion control structures are not permitted to protect property, and the location of this riprap would serve no purpose in protecting the dwelling. Further, it appears that proposed riprap would tie into the existing riprap in seawall on site, which remains unauthorized by the DEEP. The applicant's consultant has discussed this compliance issue with LWRD enforcement staff and was informed that an application for a certificate of permission must be submitted to the DEEP for review and for an approval to retain the unauthorized structures regardless of the outcome of the subject CSP. No COP application has been received by DEEP as of the date of this letter. Connecting the proposed line of riprap to the existing unauthorized riprap along the seawall would likely require additional DEEP approval prior to its placement, and it is unlikely that such authorization could be issued. In addition, the proposed walls and riprap reinforcement would be considered an obstruction by FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program regardless of the height. The revised application narrative claims that the DEEP's comments with respect to obstructions are contrary to FEMA guidelines. This is incorrect, and the revised application/narrative materials do not contain a citation of the FEMA Technical Bulletin to dispute DEEP's interpretation. The placement of any type of obstruction onto a VE zoned property, even a low-profile wall, has the potential to exacerbate existing and future storm impact conditions on the house and property. For the commission's information, the requirements as presented in Technical Bulletin 5, page 37, indicate that reinforced walls, no matter the height, would be considered an obstruction within a VE zone by NFIP standards and may even act as flood and erosion structural structures. This applies to lines of stone/boulder material placed on a VE zoned property. DEEP's August 27, 2024 site inspection also identified several potential NFIP dwelling violations. The dwelling should have been constructed to meet VE 14 flood zone standards when it was improved in 2015. The VE zone construction requirements include breakaway walls and elevated utilities and disallow finished living space below the base flood elevation and the installation of utilities and structural elements into the breakaway walls. However, we note that the air conditioning condensers are elevated on a cantilever deck on the east side of the dwelling, but the posts supporting the deck are set into the breakaway wall. On the west side of the dwelling, an outdoor shower is attached to the breakaway walls, and outdoor light fixtures are also set into the breakaway walls. In addition, the front door has a full glass panel which reveals what appears to be living space finished with drywall below the base flood elevation. FEMA standards require that the lower level can only be used for parking, storage, and building access, e.g., stairs, elevator. Drywall installed on this level would block the breakaway walls, rendering them non-functional. There are also two propane tanks next to the building that should be anchored down to prevent flotation. The applicant's consultant has not provided information as to how these existing non-compliance issues would be rectified, nor has it been demonstrated that a proposed plan to correct such deficiencies has been approved by the local floodplain administrator. The consultant provided documentation of past approvals for construction activities for the home, yet this past documentation does not demonstrate that the construction as completed is compliant. These existing non-compliant components of the structure must be corrected. We note that the town of Eastlime is currently in good standings... We note that the town of East Line is currently in good standings, standing in the NFIP program and participates in FEMA's community rating system. CRS communities are held to a higher compliance standard due to the benefits afforded them through the program, e.g., a percentage reduction on residential flood insurance premiums. DEEP is concerned that approval of the proposed riprap and walls that constitute an obstruction under FEMA and allow the dwelling's continued FEMA non-compliance could potentially jeopardize East Line's standing in either the NFIP or CRS programs. DEEP acknowledges that the hard work the town continues to perform with respect to NFIP and CRS compliance. Accordingly, DEEP strongly encourages the Zoning Commission chairperson or the zoning enforcement officer to contact Diane Ifkovick, the State Floodplain Administrator, at her email address and/or Christopher Markaship Sitch at FEMA Regional, if the Commission seeks additional interpretation of FEMA standards and requirements regarding obstructions and VE-zone construction standards. Finally, DEEP provides the following clarification of the record with respect to statements made in the applicant's narrative. The applicant's consultant states that he has received no responses from DEEP to several inquiries, which is not correct. The consultant has actually spoken to several LWRD staff on several occasions, including Karen Michaels, Diane Ifkovick, Kevin Zawoy, and LWRD Assistant Director Jeff Kaiola regarding our coastal management, FEMA, NFIP, and coastal regulatory and enforcement concerns. Furthermore, the consultant states that an agreement was reached between him and Ms. Ifkovick regarding the FEMA compliance issues of the project, yet he does not provide any detailed discussion as to what such an agreement might entail. In fact, no such agreement was made between DEEP staff and the consultant, nor could such an agreement be made since the NFIP coordinator has no authority to override FEMA construction requirements. We also respect that the site plan review and floodplain management and compliance are local processes overseen and performed by the community, and the consultant was directed several times to contact local officials responsible for the administration of these programs. In conclusion, the DEEP strongly encourages the Zoning Commission to consider the comments presented in this letter for the proposed project and require the applicant to eliminate the proposed walls and riprap from their dune planting project. Once again, thank you for the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed project. Should you have any questions regarding this letter, feel free to contact Karen Michaels of my staff. Sincerely, Brian Thompson, Director, DEEP Land and Water Sources Division.
Thank you. We just have one memo left.
We're going.
From Daco. Do you want me to start that one, or does someone else want to?
Wait, this is a second.
I'll start.
I'll start it.
Okay.
We'll go down the line. It's this one right here.
Okay.
This one right here. Okay. Mr. Mahollan, October 1, 2024, excuse me. Mr. Mahollan, Mr. William Mahollen, zoning official, Town of East Line, PO Box 519, Nyanac, Connecticut 06357. Hecker Property, 58 Shore Road, Nyanac. Dear Mr. Mahollen, I am writing to you in response to the Deep Letter of September 5, 2024, regarding the project of Mr. Craig Hecker proposed 58 Shore Road in Oak Grove Beach, Nyanac. It is unfortunate that I wasn't invited to participate in the Deep Site Visit or the of the assessment of the proposed application before the Commission. I believe that our input on-site would have been beneficial to the review of this project. There are several statements in the letter that they issued on September 5, which I believe are really contrary to the best public interest of the community and certainly of Mr. Hecker and the protection, preservation, and enhancements of the property and coastal resources on the site. I realize that fill is a regulated area, is a top of the, I realize that fill in a regulated area is a topic of great significance and covered under the zoning regulations as well as FEMA, no obstruction criteria, and soil and water conservation principles. Unfortunately, over the past few, the DEEP LWRD has been unresponsive to more than a dozen of my calls. I was, however, able to talk to Ms. Diane Ifkovich, who is the Flood Management Program Authority for the DEEP, and came to an agreement about a way in which the project could be changed to accommodate their current program guidelines and provide increased protection for Mr. Hecker's property, as well as the improved environmental quality of lands and the Oak Grove Beach Association and Indian Pond to the west of Mr. Hecker's home. The DEEP's letter, third paragraph, states that our project perimeters are excessively structural. They go on to say that these features are not in keeping with the living shoreline concepts more usually agreeable to their office staff, but they also acknowledge that the structure and living elements can be used together beneficially, which have now done, which have now done without cutting off the sea/dune interface. Accordingly, we have removed the term "living shoreline" from the application documents. The DEEP has stated that the experience indicates that they, that they type, that they type of walls, oh, that the type of walls, they had they, that they, the type of walls proposed are not beneficial to protection of healthy beaches immediately. North of the site has benefited greatly from the low-profile two-foot-high concrete block wall which has caused the grass-covered dune to grow. The purpose of the project is unaffected by these words, and benefits will still be realized. Go ahead. Thank you.
I know that there is a difference between design standard written in a handbook or, as in program guidelines, in a permit handbook, but our project application in this case is site-specific, not general. This project is reactive to existing storm damage and storm-induced conditions that are frequent and repeatable in coastal storm conditions at this site. Our project design also considers the damage that is being done to Indian Pond to the west, where wave and wind-induced sand transport eroded from this site washes into the pond. The Deep is concerned that the proposed wall is contrary to FEMA guidelines, but the wall will be two to three feet lower than the dune behind to the west. See attached photos. Insinuations in the DEEP's letter that this project is flood and erosion control project, make no mistake about it, this is a dune enhancement project intended to trap wind and wave-borne sand on a site, enhancing a growing dune that were made stable even during adverse coastal storms, where breaking wave forces currently erode the toe of the existing dune. This characteristic is clearly depicted in our topographical survey, which shows the lowest point, the property being the southeasterly corner. The northerly edge of the property is adjacent to a part of the dune which has developed due to low-profile, two-foot-high concrete block or stone seawall landscaping wall, which has amassed a dune of six feet in height on the next property north. This condition was the inspiration for the design of the Hecker property. This is a dune enhancement project. In my discussions, my discussions with Ms. Ifkovich, she was concerned that the low-profile concrete block and sheeting piling portion of the work represented too much structure. I should point out that this is an opinion, not a hard, fast definition based on oceanographic engineering standards and the climatic-induced wave characteristics to which this site is exposed. The Deep's characterization is very general. The fact that the storm-driven waves wash over the site and wash sand into the pond is a clear illustration of the insufficiency of the existing grades and gradients to contend with typical coastal storms, not to mention the documented sea level rise. To not do anything at this site, dunes this site, and the existing beach dune and the pond to further damage contrary to the property owner's rights and common sense. It is our judgment that some of the original scope of work is essential for this property, so that, so the stone and on the Cobble Beach will remain, but will be more focused to reduce the loose stone area of coverage, and the sheet piling has been detected.
Agreed.
We'll take it from here, Nancy.
The proposed line of stone along the waterward south side of the property, just upland of the coastal jurisdiction line, was a deliberate feature designed to disperse and attenuate wave energy prior to its contact with this property. This is an important feature and is a natural form of the shoreline protection that is consistent with the feature of the property. Please note the attached photographs that the beach south of the house is cobble, Mother Nature demonstrating that sand alone is inadequate. The Commission should understand that the waves breaking on the beach have to be five feet in height to deposit cobbles on the upper reaches of the beach. Stone is essential to this beach area. Photos over the past centuries show the beach has receded 100 feet or so. The dune grass that is proposed to be planted behind the stone wall will in fact start to grow into the line of stone and sand as sand levels the dune rise. It is easy for a regulatory agency to define living shoreline that is generally vegetarian, entirely vegetarian-based, and has no structural elements capable of dealing with breaking wave impacts. The bottom line is, however, that if we do not protect the toe of the dune, the rest of the dune will never develop and will be continually eroded during coastal storms with an easterly fetch. A natural unprotected beach toe in a longshore sediment transport setting, it will continue to diminish, and sand will disperse into the bay as it historically has over the past 70 years. Please see attached photographs from the State Archives showing diminishing beach at the width, beach width at this site. The natural response of the land to lack of toe protection is to erode until it no longer provides any dune function or support of upland develop or recreational usage. This case exactly has occurred in Jordan Cove and Waterford, where longstanding structural elements from the 1920s were removed several years ago, and the speed of land in Jordan Cove has all but disappeared, forming a massive sand flat which is unvegetative, unproductive in terms of native species support. Our approach on this project was maintain the existing site characteristics which can support a dune and encourage dune vegetation growth towards the improvements of stability of the land. Again, our design is based on what we observed on the property to the north, as shown in the attached photographs and referenced in the Deep's letter of September 5. This project has a minimum profile increase and modifications to the property visible from the road, again, reference our photography, would not be visible from the water side except on scrutinous examination. The creation of suitable habitat for dune grass to grow, however, would be recognizable on-site and from a distance as it is to the north. The Deep's letter has also referenced alleged zoning building deficiencies. I would like to note that the modifications and improvements to this home conducted five to 10 years ago were covered by zoning permits, building permits, a certificate of occupancy, elevation certificates, and so on, and copies of these documents provided herewith for Deep's record. The documents were all obtained from the East Line, Town of East Line Building and Zoning Files. It appears that Deep was responding to apparent conditions as opposed to a detailed review of the file and understanding of the design of the house, the internal and exterior breakaway walls, and the suitability of this design under the flood management programs of the state and town. One last comment, I would note that Mr. Kevin Zawoy of the Enforcement Division, one of the Deep analysts that I was able to speak with about this project, Mr. Zawoy acknowledged that Hecker's home has existed on the site since before Deep had a coastal management program. He also noted that the stonework at this site appears to have existed on the 1995 grandfather date, and he would be agreeable to processing a certificate of permission, a Deep permit applications to retain and maintain the existing stonework on the site. I told Mr. Zawoy that Mr. Hecker has done no work on the site or his home since acquiring it two years ago. Mr. Hecker has authorized us to prepare the necessary COP application, and we will be ready to submit it to Deep in the immediate future once we complete the town application process.
Okay. In conclusion, I would offer the following. One, the Deep's assertion that the house is non-compliant with the flood programs of the state and federal government is an error. The town files indicate to the contrary that the modifications to this home have undergone the standard process of town approval for design and construction. The original construction of this house was well booked for 40 years before the 1995 grandfather date, and it is eligible for a shorefront protection modification. Two, the Deep's indication that the existing stonework in front of the house is not covered by an existing permit will be remedied with the submission of a permit application to retain and maintain the stonework. This work is now in process. When the house was built and stonework installed, there was more land out into the bay in front. The land has eroded away, leaving the stone in the Deep's jurisdiction where originally it was not. Three, this site is roughly 100 feet long, and the walls, utilities, and stone on the north side of the house is bordered to the north by a dune. The 40 feet of yard south of the house is less than a tenth of the dune vegetated strip that runs south to the Adewan Beach, Dune Beach Recreation Area. This proposal for the Hecker's property will have a measurable beneficial effect on the beach dune feature at the south end of Oak Grove Beach. Four, the Deep's assertion that this project is excessively structural have been remedied by the modified diminished application documents that we have prepared and submit herewith. The steel sheet piling has been removed from the project, and a series of snow fence, dune fences have been shown to replace the steel sheet piling on a demonstration basis. The Deep has indicated that if the dune fencing does not achieve some level of improved retention and conservation of sand on the site, and that the diminished wind and wave sand transport characteristics of the site have benefited the pond, they would reconsider the steel sheet piling as a viable option. We would note that the terrain on the southwest property corner is about the same height as the wall proposed. With respect to the construction methodology for this project, the homeowners will have the option of building the concrete wall landscaping wall out of pre-manufactured architectural blocks or cast-in-place concrete as shown in the application drawings. The lines and grades and form fitting of the block wall are fairly self-explanatory by the application drawing itself. With regard to construction mythology, methodology, the sand fencing will be installed as it is on beaches all around coastal Connecticut, Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and New York. Six-foot steel stakes or posts will be driven at five-foot intervals in the approximate line shown on the application drawings. The wood slat snow fence, sand fence, which comes in 25-foot bundles, will be rolled out adjacent to the stake stood up on the edge and then wired to the stakes. This will allow for easy reconfiguration to suit accumulating sand patterns and conditions, and to raise the snow fence, sand fence, as sand accumulates on the site. The stonework along the upper beach just above the high-tide line in CJL will be laid out by surveying stakeout at first. Stone will be set back from the high-tide line in CJL, a measurable distance of one to two feet before a line of stone is placed on the rocky Cobble Beach. A second line will be laid in close proximity to and behind the first line and then capped with a third line. This will create a wave dispersal formation with 25% voids and allowance of continued natural drainage patterns. The shape and low profile of the structure will tend to limit wave scour for the accumulating sand behind without altering storm flooding characteristics of this or adjacent sites. This work will be done by a backhoe and lightweight excavator driving across the existing beach, staying clear of the property line to the south. Based on all of these considerations, we respectfully request your approval of the plan at the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. I will be available at the meeting to answer any questions from the Commission or yourself of the property being the southeasterly corner. Am I on the right page? Okay.
That's it.
All right. Your assistance and guidance on this project have been greatly appreciated as always. Your assistance and guidance on this project have been greatly appreciated as always. Please let me know if you have any remaining questions regarding our application. Very truly yours, Keith Nielsen, P.E. That's it.
Wow.
Okay.
We need a machine that can start reading that stuff. Well, get in there.
Mr. Nielsen, I believe you're up.
Thank you. I'm Keith Nielsen, Daco. I know we've met before on other projects and so on and representing the Hecker family tonight for what, in my opinion, are very minor modifications to an existing property.
Would you mind speaking up just a little?
Sure.
Thank you.
These are very minor modifications to the Hecker property and the response from the DEP was a surprise to me that they would come out so vehemently against such needed modifications to the site and such minimal impact. The, I'd like to go through what the project consists of briefly and then I have some comments that I think are important for everybody to consider. First of all, I've colored the sketch in a little bit so that you could see it somewhat more clearly. This is Shore Road coming down from the north. It ends, the pavement actually ends in front of the Hecker's house, doesn't go any further. There is an armored shoreline in front of the house. I don't know when this armor stone was put in, but it was somewhere on the order of 30 or 40 years ago. I would show you some photographs that I have picked up, but we don't have photographs that clearly show exactly when this appeared. My feeling is that it was in the 80s. This is the house, shown in brown. The armor stone is out here in front of the patio. It's a two-level patio, part concrete and part wood. And the rest of the site, which only goes about five to 10 feet north of the north edge of the house and about 30 to 40 feet south of the south edge of the house, these are the only undeveloped areas on the site. This area in front of the house is a driveway and you can see that they have an existing concrete wall along the south edge of the house. Our proposal was to extend that wall to the south. Originally, we had shown a steel sheet pile enclosure in here so that sand that got blown into the yard would tend to stay in the yard. It wouldn't stay absolutely in certain wave conditions, some of it would still be lost. But the bottom line is it would tend to help stabilize and retain sand in that area so that the dune would have an excellent chance of growing as we had intended. When I spoke with Diane Ifkewick at the DEP, who incidentally was the only LWRD analyst that I actually got to speak to on this project despite a dozen calls, she said that the steel sheet piling represented too much structure, could we do with less? And I've worked with Diane a lot over the last 10 to 20 years and she's pretty reasonable. And I said, "But Diane, what if it doesn't work?" And she said, "We can reconsider it if, at a later date, if the justification warrants." And I said, "I'll trust you on that one." And so that's the way we came to the agreement that the steel sheeting in here and the steel sheeting over here would be taken out of the project. So your current plan does not show any steel sheet piling. We did leave 10 cubic yards of stone in the project and to give you an idea of what that means, if you took, the way I described it in the letter is lay out a line of stone, a surveyor would actually delineate the coastal jurisdiction line at a two-foot offset and we would lay a line of stone from the porch over to the property line and then we would lay another line of stone behind that and then we would put a third line of stone on top of that. These are stones that are about one to two feet in size. I'm sorry, what was your question?
That was my question.
Yeah, they're small stone. Our purpose here was not to create a mountain, but a tripping hazard for the waves. And so we've got this detail over here that shows basically what I've described. We're trying to make sure that the constant agitation of the waves is disrupted enough by those stones that sand that accretes behind them will have more of an opportunity to stay put on the site. And that's the only purpose of that. And 10 cubic yards would be one dump truck full of stone. So it's not, it's not a tremendous amount. This wall, which I've shown as concrete and you can see it's got a little concrete footing and so on, we called it out as either cast-in-place concrete or concrete block. And you'll notice in the DEP's letter, they said a reinforced concrete wall. When we put in concrete, it has to be reinforced because otherwise it'll split and crack as it dries and so on and it won't last very long. But the concrete block are, have a benefit of also looking pretty nice. They can be simulated, cut granite stones and so on and they can look nice, much easier to install, do not necessarily require the footing. And so you can have a wall that's two to three feet high depressed or set down into the sand, but projecting above the sand just a little bit. We have, we have shown here the existing top of this small wall at the southwest end of the house is elevation 8.3 and that's the elevation that we provided for the top of this wall. So this would all be uniform. The elevation of the ground over here at the southwest corner of the property is over seven and a half feet. So that leaves about a nine-inch wall exposed in that area. When you get over to the existing wall, it's not quite two feet. So this is a low-profile wall. The purpose of it is when sand comes in by wave action and so on, it will stop at least for a while at the, at the wall and stay on the property. Like I said, the stone along the toe is only there to minimize the amount of wave action that constantly erodes a granular material like sand. The idea for this wasn't anything more than noting the condition that exists along Shore Road up here a little bit further. Someone built a concrete block wall there 20 years ago or something like that. It's not new stone, but the dune that has developed behind it is six feet above the road. And one of the pictures that I submitted to you as part of this letter shows that. And so it's, it's an important feature where we are doing something relatively small and inconsequential and creating something of a fair amount of value. In addition, sand that comes in across this part of the property, you'll notice I've colored in green over here, this is a dune and everything that we're doing over here is two to three feet lower than the dune. We're not putting up a new prominent wall in front of breaking waves and wave run-up on the beach. What we're putting up here is several feet, two to three feet lower than this dune that has accreted behind. I want to just, does your packet include the aerial photographs of?
Yes.
From DEP records? Okay, if you look at the aerial photographs, two of them together are shown as 1956 and 1995. If you can find that, I'll get into why this is so important. And if you can't find it, just let me know and I'll give you mine.
We've got a lot of pages here.
I know.
Can I, can you hold up yours please so we can see what it, just what?
Can I approach this?
Sure. You don't bite. It's this one, right?
No, this, this is an aerial photograph from 1956.
I don't, I don't think we've got.
We don't have that.
No, they don't have that.
Well, you can have these.
Okay.
I'll look at you.
Is that this one?
You see what a broad beach this is, Diane? It's hard to tell dimensions, but look at how small the houses are.
Okay.
This is a broad beach, 50 to 100 feet. Here it is in 1995, 30 years ago. You see where the beach is? It's right next to the houses. So that's how much sand has been lost in there in 30 years based on DEP programs. This is 1956. Do you see how small the houses are?
Wow.
Here's the houses and you see how much beach has gone. The, this pond point was a stone structure of some kind, but it had sand on both sides of it, all right? And in 1995, it had very little. And this is what it looks like now. There's no sand. Okay, silver it looked like in 1956. You feel what down there? This is a beach that's 50 to 100 feet wide in 1956. It's 20 or so feet. You can see the size and location of the houses and you can see how close we are here. This is, and this is what the pond point grind now looks like with a good amount of sand on it. What you'll also notice is in 1956, the backside of this breach, right? I suspect the beach that the shoreline used to be have a notch in and someone put this stone in there to buzz off the notch. No one will, I won't ever know really for certain, but look where the back of the dune is now compared to the house. Here it's about even with the middle of the house. Here it's about 50 feet back west. The beach is moving west, all right? And these two photographs are compelling, you know, in that regard. This house is Hecker's. It wasn't built in 1956, but from what I've heard, what I've heard in discussions with other staff and so on, it was built somewhere in the 50s, so somewhere around 56. But you see how far the beach goes back now? And you see this house is that one right there? See where the pond was? And now the pond's back. The beach is moving west.
Is this their house right here? This is their house?
That's the next house north.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so you see the, the house north? Next to this house. And you see how the backside of the dune going into the pond, Indian Pond is right behind the house. A house would go away. You see how far it is there? This house is 30 feet from front to back. So that's 50 feet back further than it was.
Now, this is a beach area. I'm sure they have a permit, right? It's a beach area for the residents there? So I'm sure, do you have any idea when or how often they replenish their beach sand to perhaps build that over time? Because they do go out there and they do it, I'm sure, because it's their beach area. So could that build up also to be the residents, you know, the beach associations putting their sand and it accumulates through the years?
It could. And there are DEP permits to do that. But why don't I do this with you? There's the back of the house north and you can see how Indian Pond is right up to the back of it. There's the house right there and you can see the dune has moved in on the face and back.
Yep.
So the, so that's why I made the statement in, in my letter back to Mr. Malholland. This is a site specific, this is a very exact project suitable for this site. This is not out of a textbook, this is not generalization, this is not advanced oceanography 101. This is looking at a photograph that shows that the beach has moved 50 feet in 50 or 70 years. And a foot a year is a lot of movement, you know? And so what opportunity does Mr. Hecker have to protect his house? We can't, you see that the DEP does not want us to do anything and what we're talking about is a line of stone that goes from this wall to that door, five feet wide, sorry, five feet wide and that high. That's not a big structure, that's not excessive structure. What they're trying to, what we're trying to do is make enough of a disruption of incoming waves that most of the energy will be disrupted before it gets to a point where it can erode the sand out of his yard. The fact that these contours, the three, four, five, six, seven contours are all coming back toward the road, once they get past the rock on his shorefront, is telling you this is an eroding site. The DEP has said it is not an eroding site. Your pictures show you from 1956 to 1995, it moved 50 feet. The whole beach moved 50 feet. Something could and should be done and that's what we're trying to help the Hackers do. So the, I've gone through, the, there's other photographs in there by the way from Google and you can see how the diminishment of sand on the beach was notable between the 2010 and 2015 photographs. That's when Hurricanes Irene and Sandy came through. And Hurricane Sandy was coming directly at this beach from the southeast and a lot of the sand that ended up on the road and over in Indian Pond was attributable to that one storm. And for any of you who were down there on the beach like I was, it was a scary storm. I mean, I've, I've been, I've been doing this for a while and studying, you know, storm impacts and so on, but when you're standing down there on the beach and there's six-foot waves 100 feet from you breaking right in front of you, you can't help remembering that when you start thinking about what can we do here along the shore that will help to make something better. And this little dune that we're trying to create here is not going to be a world changer, but it is, it involves a minimal structure and minimal toe energy dissipation that will help sand to stay on the site. In one of the photographs that I submitted and it may take me a minute to find it or you may know where it is right away, the, I actually took a picture of that little block wall north of Hecker's house, okay? And you can see the dune grass. You can see, I was standing this high and the dune grass is above my head because you can't see any of the horizon through or over the dune grass, so. And, cause you can't see any of the horizon through or over the dune grass, so.
Is that this one?
That's it. Yep, and, um, and I think there might have been another one.
When was the house built?
Yes, that's the wall right there. The, um.
It was renovated a few years ago, but I don't know when it was built originally.
Yeah, it was my understanding that it was built in the fifties. And the photograph from fifty-six doesn't show it. I, I looked at that as closely as I could on the screen and before it was printed, because it printed so small.
I have, oh, go ahead.
I couldn't see the house in the fifty-six photograph. So if it was built in the fifties, it was sometime shortly after that.
I have a question, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, all these improvements, like the deck and this wall, these were all done in the nineties, two thousands?
Um, I'm, I'm not really.
I'm assuming, cause I see so many permits and flood elevations in here, that they must have pulled the permit to do this.
They, the file is full of permits.
I can, I can see that.
When, when I, when I, um, got the first letter, um, from the D E P, um, I was able to meet with, um, Bill Shear, um, the town engineer. And he, he said, um, here's the two files. And we just sat there and looked through the whole thing and it was, it was, um, this house didn't appear by accident. And it was, there's a real design to it. And, um, I think that, um, um, one of the observations that the D E P made was presented in an unfortunate manner because it states that dry, um, wall has been added to something. And therefore, this is not a light breakdown or breakaway type wall. And I respectfully disagree that, you know, if you put sheet rock on wood framing and stuff, um, and a wave hits it, sheet rock's not gonna last.
Was this house raised from, and raised up?
Yes. Now, one thing I.
So that's why the breakaway walls are there.
One thing I'd, I'd just like to point out there, um, FEMA standards, um, changed after Hurricane Irene. They change after, after significant storms. I wasn't paying that much attention to it after Hurricane Gloria, which is when I arrived in the area. But the, the thing that really presented a lot of problems for me and people in my, um, industry was that, um, FEMA changed the rules in two thousand twelve. And then Hurricane Sandy hit. And they changed them again in two thousand thirteen. And when they changed them the second time, I thought, you know, I, I'm really, I do real good with docs. I'm gonna stick with the docs, I'm not gonna do any more house things, just because I couldn't keep up with it. And, um, and there was a lot of damage in those storms that we had to contend with. And, um, and the unfortunate thing for this property is that Hurricane Sandy was coming right at us. Hurricane Irene was coming this way. Part of the reason that these contours look the way they do is that when large waves, and in Hurricane Irene, the waves were not as big as Sandy. But both of those storms lasted, Irene lasted eighteen hours, Sandy lasted twenty-two hours. Because of the particular, um, atmospheric conditions, they were moving slowly. Sandy was moving east to west. And I looked through some of my hurricane records and stuff, that was the only one I found that moved east to west. Almost all of them moved south, southeast, I'm sorry, south, southwest, something like that, toward the north northeasterly, um, as they passed by us. And it was, you know, we're trying to make sense out of something that is not predictable. And so we took a small bite at this project. Small stone wall, small concrete or block wall. Um, the block wall even complies with one of the, um, the statements that the D E P said or made. They said they would not allow or reinforced concrete wall was not consistent, but they didn't rule out the concrete block wall. And so I'm okay building the concrete block wall. It's clearly not as good, but if something breaks, it's not that hard to fix. And so, um, if it, if it slips out of alignment. But it does provide a basis, almost exactly the same as this dune up here, that will allow a dune to accrete and will create more of a, um, a wave run-up dissipation area, which is what we need along the shore. It's not violent, it's not gonna create abusive or, um, astounding, um, results. But over the period of time, it will keep the beach where it should be.
Who, who did DEP send down to look at it? Was it their more experienced people or can, were you there or? Can you speak to that or?
Ken, um, I received a call from DEP asking, inviting me, they were going to go out and look at this. Um, so I drove out and, um, there were several, maybe almost a dozen folks from D E P, including their enforcement. Um, Wayne, Diane Nipovik, Kevin Savoy, the enforcer, Diane is the FEMA girl. There were several really young, new people that were recent hires apparently, who they were trying to use this as a training, um, visit. And, um, upon my arrival, I asked where the owner and their engineer was. They were apparently not invited, um, so, because I thought that it couldn't be productive without that interaction to ask the engineer if somebody had a question. We could accomplish a lot if everybody was there, um, but he was not invited. So that visit was about an hour. Um, and, uh, I subsequently moved on because I had other things to do and couldn't be productive, productive at the meeting. And they made their observations and subsequently their interactions with, uh, with Daco. Um, I did talk to Karen Michaels today on the phone, um, because there was some discussion about, uh, her letter, was it gonna be read in? And of course, I'm sure that it would be. And so that's where we find us, ourselves here today. I will add that I didn't fully review the file. Um, when this was done, it was raised. It had full reviews, but I did not do the FEMA review because at that time, the building official, who's no longer here, and I were both designated in the zoning ordinance, he did the review, I had very little to do with it. Subsequently, as this commission may recall, our regulations were modified and he was taken out. And now it's only I who does the review because what we found is you can't have two people applying the regulations because they don't apply it even-handedly. And have there been modifications after the job was completed? I don't know. We didn't get into the building that day. Um, you could look into the window of the doorway in the garage area, which is where the breakaway walls were in, you saw a wall. Um, I haven't been in, I know, I don't think FEMA was in, and I don't think DEP was in because, nobody got in because the ownership wasn't there to let us in. Um, so Keith has put on the record his observations this evening and that's where we find ourselves.
I don't really see what drywall inside has to do with you're here to ask approval on. So I don't know why that would, to me, that's a separate issue.
Well, and, and I did have that conversation with, uh, with DEP today and I said, because I was asked about that. And there was a, their letter alluded to our C R S program, which is a completely different program. And my position was, well, if there's a FEMA compliance issue, Diane and I will get together and we'll go back into the house and take a look. And if there was some work done, we would then address it. But it's, in my opinion, it's a separate issue. This application is for coastal area management, for the issues that were put on the record this evening. If they feel that there's a compliance issue in another area, FEMA, with the building, that's a different discussion, in my opinion. And I think our attorneys would tell us that because I would have to do the work. And the question is, what's my liability if I tie them together? Because they are separate issues, that was done there. They received their C O's at the time it was all done, there's a complete record, there are many, many more items in the file, probably another two hundred pages. Um, so that's kind of what I perceive the facts to be in this particular case. Um, Keith has articulated his position, we've heard from DEP. Um, and I have one last thing, if you're satisfied with my questions, cause I have a, I'd ask Keith if you could, um, briefly, identify the coastal policies, just for the record out of your report?
Sure.
And then the potential adverse impacts? And identify the coastal policies, just so that they're put into the record should we end up in, in somewhere else in the future on this case.
Um, um, if you don't mind, I would like to just say one other thing. Um, a reference was made to, um, FEMA's technical bulletin number five, which, this is it. And, um, saying that we were not, um, complying with this technical bulletin. And I just want to, I just wanna go through a couple of things. And if you can look at this while I'm talking. All right, this is, seven point five begins here and it runs through various chapters, some of which were referenced by the, um, the D E P in their letter. And.
Do you want to start and we'll pass it?
And what I'm.
Lauren, do you want to?
Well, I will, I will say specifically, they said page thirty-seven of the technical bulletin, cause I made a note, so.
He's just gonna, we're just gonna pass it down.
Okay, well, I just, it was page thirty-seven.
So, the, um, so what, what those texts are, are saying, they are, um, they refer to drainage patterns and, um, water flow and, and, and that kind of thing. And, um, the important parts of seven point five, of that document actually, are they don't want you to deflect waves, okay? This is not going to deflect waves. What we're trying to do is slow them down, take some of their horsepower away so that they don't devastate the ground so much. That they don't create ponding. You can see that we've got a uniform gradient, um, on the property, we're not gonna create ponding. We hope with the fencing that we have shown on here, that we will be able to accrete enough sand over a period of time that, um, the, the site will raise and some of these, um, eroding contours that are, are shown on the drawing, um, will be rectified. The property doesn't go that far, we're not gonna be able to solve the problems that exist south of this, uh, property, but we can, we can help to solve them on his property and thereby make, if we can raise this two to three feet, you know, one to two, six inches, something in here, this will be higher so that waves coming in from this direction will help to protect the Heckers' house. Putting the dune grass on it is a, a big advantage because when the dune grass gets hit by an oncoming wave, it lays down and so the wave flows over it, the sand doesn't erode so much from the dune because it's covered by the leaves of the dune grass. And so that little protective, um, barrier is enough to save a substantial amount of erosion. And like I said, we've got a demonstration right there, a hundred feet away from our project, that shows that it works. Um, no ponding, we've got a, a fairly crisp slope here of, um, of ten percent and it's not going to, there's nothing that's gonna pond and it's sand, the water runs right through it. Um, the entire, entire side of the work is lower than the crest of the dune. I just wanted to emphasize that again because the elevation of the dune over here is about ten. We're talking about eight and we're talking about four down here. The entire site is below the crest of the dune. So we're not changing what the waves see when they're coming to the site. We're just changing how much deterioration the waves can do. Um, that increase in height and the wave fences will soften the wave run-up, which is one of the direct, um, issues that they raise in seven point five that they would like to have addressed. Placement of fill up to two feet is not regarded as any kind of a problem under seven point five. So we're, we're abiding with that. We're keeping this low, we're keeping this low, everything is under two feet. And the sand that we hope to accrete would be about two feet also. We need to try and match the local topography and you can see we're doing that. We're not, we're not creating, this is the profile and this greener line up here is what we hope that the dune will rise to. It's consistent, it's a sloping, it's a sloping sand dune. We're not adding material, it's natural material. It's what's coming out of the water. No impact on drainage, again, it's sand, it's not going to have a drainage problem. No house impacts, there's no houses south of here. And this house blocks everything, anything that we're doing here. This house and this stone blocks any effects from this, from going further north. There's no houses on the back site. And any of the water that gets past this modified lawn will continue to get past it and will go into Indian Pond. And I'm sorry, we can't solve all the problems, but we can do a little bit to, to help make it better. And, um, and the sand fences were a direct response to Diane Icovec. I told her I would put those in, um, and take the sheet piling out and I did that, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
What's, what would happen if the recommendations that you wanna do, what if it doesn't work? What, what's a, what's the alternative, what, what's gonna happen to their house then?
The, um, that's a tough one because, um, the, the measures that I'm recommending are, are really measures that have proved themselves over time. And they're appropriate for this.
To what size storm? Would you, what kind of estimate?
That's where we get into the problem, the size, the direction, the duration, that's specifically why I mentioned Sandy and Irene. When they hit Connecticut shores, neither one of them was categorized as a hurricane. They were just tropical storms, I don't know if you remember that. But they were downgraded to tropical storms. The reason I know this is because, or it made such an impression on me, was because the D E P threw it back in my face and said, "You can't design every structure around here for a category one or two hurricane." And I said, "You're right. Hurricane Irene and Hurricane Sandy, when they hit us, were not hurricanes."
And what year was that?
Uh, Irene was two thousand eleven and Sandy was two thousand twelve in October. Irene was August twenty-seventh of two thousand eleven.
Because according to the paperwork here, it looks like in two thousand and fourteen, I don't know if you know anything about that, they were, they were trying to do something similar to what you're, they're trying to do now, on the same property.
Hmm. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure they got a faceful of it during Sandy. And, and like I said, I wasn't even at this site, I was at another site right here in Niantic Bay. And I was looking at the waves and, and they were taller than I was, I was standing in the boardwalk area. You may remember, that's one of those storms that knocked out the boardwalk, the original boardwalk.
And what is the feet, the amount of footage that you're proposing that you wanna do above the stillwater bond? The stillwater flood, breaking wave load?
Um, well.
Cause I wanna compare what you're, what you're recommending to what they tried to do in the property here, somebody tried to do in two thousand and fourteen.
The, what we're recommending is the top elevation of this wall here is going to be eight point three.
Okay, so in two thousand and fourteen, it was five point eight seven. So if you're saying that the sand, I'm just questioning, cause I'm, I'm just curious. If the sand is doing what you say that it's doing over the course of the years, that would be lower than what it was in two thousand and fourteen and it's not? That's my question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I'm seeing, um, what your question, the, first of all, um.
Like in two thousand and fourteen, it looks like they requested a structure and the, and the waves and all that stuff. It was only five point eight seven feet that they were wanting to do. They wanted to put a hot dip galvanized, some kind of structure, something there. Materials used, concrete, reinforcing steel, straps and anchor bolt. Materials used, concrete, reinforcing steel, straps and anchor bolts.
Is that what was removed?
No, this is what they proposed, this is what they wanted, structural notes.
I don't know, 5.3, was that...
Well, 5.87 and then it, you know, and has, goes and discusses the pounds and, you know, per linear foot. And then it says the debris impact load is 154 pounds per linear foot at base of foundation. So it's actually right in front of the property.
Right.
So if you're saying, I'm, so I just want to make sure I understand it correctly. So you're saying that the sand, that is a bigger area now, that you said it was beneficial?
Mm-hmm.
You, yeah, you, you want to make your structure piece, or I don't know what you want me to call it, but it needs to be, how many feet, eight point?
The, the top of the wall is going to be 8.3.
Okay.
All right, that matches the top of this wall. Okay?
Yep.
So we're consistent, like I just read from 7.5?
Right.
8.3, right there. This would be elevation, this would be about five and a half for the top of the stone down there. Be, be about 5.5.
Now, Indian Pond was the one that was reclaimed, right? Is that the one where they connected it back to the sound a few years back by the Yacht Club?
They, they connected it, yes, there's...
So it's brackish now?
It's brackish, right.
Any other questions?
Is, is it fair to say that as global warming continues, beaches are being lost on the eastern seaboard?
If there, if there are no storm recharges of beach sand, that would be the case. Beaches would sink.
Okay, so...
Or subside beneath the waves.
Then all the houses that were built in that area are in danger of falling into the ocean?
A lot of houses will have to be raised. Roads will have to be raised. Yards will have to be raised.
So this isn't Mother Nature saying, "This is what I want, this is man saying, 'Mother Nature, do what I want.'"
No. What we're saying, what we're accepting is, Mother Nature is doing this and here's what we can do to help maintain an even rate of, of the land elevation at this site. Can't help the house, but I can, I can help the land elevation. So we're trying to get the land to go up, acknowledging that sea level is also going up.
Thank you.
I have another question, Keith.
Sure.
So in our packet, it has May 7th, 2014. They were non-compliant then, the property owners were, not the current ones, but if you're looking at the history of the property. So they were non-compliant, trying to do the same thing that you're trying to do. And it, here's the letter right here. Has, has the property flooded? Is that why they keep, they've tried to do it back in 2014? Kind of basically the same thing. But it says they were non-compliant and it has to do with the structure that they were putting up on the property.
Is that the riprap?
No, not the, not the...
I have a feeling that's when the house reconstruction was starting. The, I, I don't know, I don't know all the details about that. And I don't know what they were doing in 2014.
I think the non-compliance referred to in that letter has to do with the FEMA regulations and that's been addressed since then.
Right, yeah. And then on the back of it had the scope of the structural work and then it talks about, you know, putting up a struc, you know, something there to try to save their property, basically.
One other thing that I would like to say, the DEP has said that they need to get a certificate of permission for this stonework out in front. And we've told them, absolutely, we will get the certificate of permission, we'll submit all the documents they need. And they were concerned about the timing that, of that stone placement. I don't know what that was, but from Kevin Zavoy's own assessment of the aerial photographs, he's pretty certain that it was before 1995. That's one of the grandfather dates. This is stone protection to protect a pre-existing house and so it would be eligible. And Kevin and I have agreed that we will do that as soon as we get through this process. So we, we have, we've not been running away from anything here. The, and we're trying to do something that will be a legitimate improvement for the well-being of the Heckers in their, their home. And it's not going to adversely impact anything. We're not, we're not going to adversely impact anything. We've got a beach, we're going to keep a beach, we've got dune grass and we're going to have a lot more of it and...
So going to be native, the native dune grass?
Well, what I've told the Heckers is, they ought to take the, the dune grass that's growing right down here and over here on their property and said, "Take it out of there and put it over here." The, the DEP wanted a, a detailed botanical assessment and I said, "That, you know, whatever that is, it's already telling us it grows there." So we just put it over here. And, you know, put it in a one...
Just because it grows there doesn't mean it's native.
No, it doesn't. But, but in the DEP's assessment, they said it is native sand and dune grass. And so...
So you're going to match it?
We're going to match it. We're going to actually, you know, pull it out of here and put it over there. Let me deal with the coastal resources. Okay, so the coastal resources are the general resource, beaches and dunes, bluffs, I'm sorry, coastal hazard areas, which is stormy waters, coastal waters, which is the estuarian embayment, depending on how you classify Niantic Bay. It is called an estuarian embayment, but it really is nearshore waters. The ocean impacts that come through the race come right to us. And so it really is more nearshore waters. Developed shorefront, obviously they've got a house. And, and rocky shorefront because of the rocky nature of some of these. You don't see it, this is not native. You see more sand up here, but down here on the, on the groin, this whole point is rocks. And so it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to dig down very far here to be on rocks. And, and so rocky shorefront is appropriate. And so what we have, the conditions of the coastal resources, the house is located within 25 feet of the mean high water line or across the face of a longstanding rock accumulation, which by deflection protects to an extent the shore from storm-driven waves at the house site. Spartano alternate flora occurs down in this area. Just off the site, there are some isolated springs throughout the, the front of the property, but most of it grows to the south. Niantic Bay is an estuarian embayment by definition, but it is, got most of the characteristics of a, nearshore waters. And these, these water features will not be impacted or modified by the project. The grasses that grow down here, that's where the spartina is, you can see by one of the photographs, I've shown a photograph of the whole work area, it's all rock. It's smaller rock, you know, five, six inches down to three inches, but it's rock. It just, it's, it looks out of place. But Mother Nature threw it there, so that's how we decided that's where the new rock should go, in the area where the existing rock would already serve as a base. And that's important because we don't want the rocks that we put on the beach to sink into the sand, if we can avoid it. And by putting them on the existing rocky base, they'll, they'll have a stable footing. So, so then we've also drawn the conclusion for consistency with the coastal use policies. We are consistent with zoning, we are consistent with the, the evolving conditions of the site. We're trying to address a deficiency in the shorefront at this site. Almost every house to the north of this, all the way up toward, till about three houses short of the Yacht Club, has a seawall, elevated patio on the back of their house and so on. And this house is, is just like the others. It's just that, it's discontinuous, it's by itself. And so it has the erosion tendency on both the north and south side. And so we are not degrading any tidal wetlands or any, any of the dune grass vegetation, we're not injuring that, we're not altering natural erosion patterns per se. We are trying to accumulate sand. We're, it's the opposite of erosion protection, we're trying to catch it and keep it on the site. So that when the really big storms come, we've got energy dissipation that's sacrificial. The hole will have to be filled up again with, with more sand. But it's a natural process, we're just providing the encapsulation for it.
Thank you.
I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I personally think what you're proposing makes, is just common sense. I don't know if anybody else has comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to move to approve it. I just said, the, the tone of the letter from DEP, I'm not, I'm not surprised that Mr. Mahal described the group that came down to see the property, because it reads like a training exercise, not like an evaluation of a property. I mean, it's as if the, as if a committee threw in everything they, they all knew. I'm not impressed by that at all. I'm, I'm prepared to, to vote to approve.
I feel the same way. I feel the house is a separate issue from the property. And, yeah, that whether, that you were not there and Mr. Mahal was not there deeply disturbs me.
I'll correct that, I was there, but Keith was not.
Oh, I gotcha.
And the owners weren't there as well.
And the owners weren't there.
Yeah.
But the engineer in particular, he should have been there.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
Yeah. I would like to make a motion to approve application of Keith Nielsen, PE of Daco Incorporated, agent for Craig Heckard, for Coastal Area Management, for Site Plan Review, for, what? New landscaping laws for property located at 54 Shore Road, Niantic Assessment Map 08.4, Lot 58. Reasons to approve. Applicant is consistent with all applicable goals and conditions of the CAM Act. Number two, applicant has taken all reasonable measures to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed activity on both coastal resources and future water-dependent uses.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstained? It passed 6-0-0? Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry for taking so long.
Keith, here's your paperwork.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, yeah, we learned, I learned a few things, thank you. That's your FEMA packet, Keith.
Has everyone has, have a chance to look at the minutes from last meeting? Do we have a motion to approve them?
We have a motion that you approved the minutes of the last meeting. I second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstained? 6-0-0, it passed. All business, we did have Attorney Blistdale here that gave us a presentation on affordable housing and I believe he is coming back in a few weeks, or is he not?
Yeah, he was going to come back and we're trying to arrange that, just as a follow-up and...
So, I, you know, I'd be thinking of any extra questions you have for him and maybe after that time, we can have a discussion if we want to move forward with the process or not. Subcommittee reports, Mr....
Mo and I are working on it, we're meeting next week. We, we're at revision 10,000 or something, but we will get back to you.
Okay, and then we have another subcommittee looking at rezoning, the RU 8040. Do we have any updates from that subcommittee?
Yes, we do. Nancy has all the dat, data on that that we've, I have a lot of data.
Okay.
In trying to whittle it down so that you don't have so much to read.
Thank you.
It's not simple.
Well, and you might want to, yeah.
Well, what I need to know, base, this really is morphing into an aquifer protection.
Which, if, if that's what it's morphing into, we may want to talk about having it under, meet as the aquifer board and have it under that board. I don't, what do you think, Mr. Mahal?
What I would, would ask is, I would like to meet with the subcommittee so I can understand exactly where you're at, so I can offer more, some guidance and you can make your choices.
At this point, we just want to bring the information that we've gotten out of the, just to bring it forward to kind of, you know, share it with everybody else.
Excuse me, I, I missed what the subject, project is.
So, so Mr. Christensen advocated changing zoning in the north end.
Oh, okay.
And in order to do that, you know, you have to figure the pros and the cons. And whatever you do in the north end, since it's the highland, affects the south. It turns out that in our town, we have a bunch of wells, they're all contaminated. And according to Mr. North, there's a 2,000-foot area of protection around these wells that is absolutely worthless since they're all contaminated. So I was thinking about this a lot and it occurred to me that if you limit, if you do not have one and two acre zoning in the north end and you turn it into five or 10 or 20 or 50 or whatever, then you limit the amount of impervious surfaces that go in, you maintain open spaces which filters the water so that by the time it gets down to Niantic or to the other side of 95, it's filtered and it's clean. It does turn out in our town that we, back in Wayne Frazier's time, agreed with the city of New Lebanon that we would provide our clean water, six months of the year, to New Lebanon, in exchange for their clean water, six months of the year, when we needed it. Well, we haven't been able to give them any water because they don't think our water's very clean. So at any point in time, they could just say, A, we're, you know, hiking up our rates, or B, you guys are shut off, or C, whatever they want to do, because they're in control and we need the water. And in these drought conditions, there are peoples whose wells are going dry. Specifically on, at the top of River View Road, kind of next to the dump. Those, that well is dry. That woman called me. So I was just trying to work out the best scenario that we don't stick our head in the sand, the wolf, the wolf is at the door, we, we have to jump and do something to protect what resources we have. And we know from testing that Don Danila and the Conservation Commission has done, is the water up in the north end that is not developed is clean. And the water, when it gets to the south end, picks up its PFAS and its road salt and it's assorted other stuff, fertilizers, et cetera. And then you have contamination. So there's one way to, to stop further contamination is to increase property sizes in the north end. And while that looks really scary, most of that is Yale property and state forest.
How many properties will that include?
Oh, I haven't counted them.
Sounds like a good place to start is a meeting with Mr. Mahal and then, you know, get cracking.
Well, I just, it's a...
And it does sound like an aquifer issue, but...
It's about the recharge, so if, I've got, God, I've got maps, I've got millions of maps. Unfortunately, they're not really reproducible to everybody, but... I can pass this down. So we can see where the aquifer, where the aquifers are and the recharge areas to the aquifers are determined upon this, the rock structure underneath it. There's all sorts of different kinds of rocks and they all have weird names. But if we want to protect everybody south of 95, then everything north of 95 or Route 1 has to be protected.
Sorry.
So this is, this is the map of the current, what we currently protect, which really doesn't do anything for the recharge areas. And it turns out that, uh, the quantity of wa, of water enough to fill one well functioning for one day is what is encompassed by the little circles, which means there's not a lot of water there. Now, there's lots of data, God knows, the quality, water quality report, protect the drinking water. Everybody says, gee, we should prefer to protect the Four Mile River watershed because that's pure. Well, the Four Mile River watershed starts up at Billy Stefanski's property at the north end of town. You can see it bubbling out of the ground. So in order to protect it, we, we need to start working on it now.
Nancy, do you think that, um, like what Mr. Mahal had said, wouldn't it possibly be that we set up a meeting just for protect, aquifer protection agency meeting? And perhaps we can, you know, we'll meet with Mr. Mahal and you and I will meet with him and show him what we have and he can give us, catch us up to date on stuff if, if we need it. We do them once a year. I think we're doing like January. But second of all, when we do, when we are scheduled a meeting, I would like to know if it's possible, if we can, um, invite people that are deemed, um, experts in their field to come and talk to all of us and that way we can get their expert opinion.
Jamie Vodri is the professor of, I don't know what, through UConn. Anyhow, she's done, she's done all the, the data for the Niantic River plans. She's done all that data.
I think it would serve the...
Let's get to go.
Yeah, well, it's, it'd get together with you two, but also too, we want to have a tentative, tentative date, but it would be good to have these experts in their field to talk to, you know, I think we owe it to the residents. I think we owe it to ourselves to, to further explore this and do it quickly, sooner, rather sooner than later.
It's too much.
So Nancy, does that seem like what we had talked about?
I think the sooner, how's, oh no, tomorrow you're off.
Yeah, so we'll meet with Belle.
Oh, I'm in tomorrow morning. We're off on Monday.
You can figure that out. You're doing yourself.
We'll talk, we'll talk early next week.
Okay, so let's, how about, how about Tuesday of next week, Belle?
I'll get my schedule because I have some appointments that people have already gotten slots, but...
Okay. You all can figure that out after.
ASAP.
All right. New business coming up. We will have the application of James Bernardo, Agent for Thomas Gardner, for modification to previously approved Coastal Area Management CAM, Site Plan for Property Identified as 7 North Drive Assessor Map 08.2, Lot 154. We scheduled that?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and the next thing will be the application of William R. Sweeney, Esquire, Attorney for John and Sally Kelsey, for a special permit to modify a legal pre-existing non-conforming camping resort under section 12.1.1A, from seasonal to year-round operations for property identified as 271 West Main Street, Niantic Assessor Map 09.0, Lot 2. And you will also schedule that?
Yes, thank you.
Any business on the floor? Anybody want to bring up anything?
Yeah, I do. I have a question. Belle, I'd like to know, um, how do we go about picking our legal counsel for zoning? Do we frequently interview people or sometimes interview, uh, other firms?
The historic process, based on my experience, has been, um, the town hires a general counsel and they're assigned to us. So I don't think the commission has really actively picked a one company or group or firm over another that's not been part of the process. The town hires and we're assigned, um, counsel from the town council's office.
We, we don't have separate budget for legal.
No, we don't. We did have a, a legal budget at one time on a line item, but it's all been now mixed into one big budget because there's so many different departments that, that require legal advice. Um, and it's every department from, from time to time. We don't always split from time to time, as you all know and have seen. But that's the process that I'm familiar with.
Do you think it would ever be possible to, we could meet with the first selectman? I know it'd be nice to have legal counsel that was more responsive and had quicker response to things we have questions about.
Certainly, as the Chair of the Zoning Commission, I'm sure you could meet with the first selectman upon request.
I think I'll do that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I mean, not that, not that they haven't represented us well or done a good job, it's not about that, but it would be nice to explore perhaps some other opportunities, a firm perhaps with a different skill set or something because Eastline, where I feel like in a lot of ways, we're at a really crucial point right now and we have so many issues that have to be dealt with when it comes to zoning and it would maybe be nice to have a fresh pair of eyes. That's why I, I asked, I'm just curious. So, thank you, Anne, for making that appointment with Mr. Cunningham.
The only thing I have, and I think of Bill Dwyer every election season, because he, he brought up a couple times, I don't know how you all feel, but I don't know, I think it'd be nice to reduce the time, amount of time that political signs are up down to one month, just because I think they're unattractive and I think it just gets neighbors angry at each other.
They should be picked up the day after the election.
I do. I really do. But I don't know, what does everybody else think?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Presently, the, you're signing Reagan's Section 18 on Political Signs allows 90 days before a, an election. That was a Mr. Dwyer annual concern. Whatever, it was an annual or biannual, but...
Would we have to write a text amendment to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Very simple to do.
Okay.
The language is already written. You just take out the 90 and put in whatever number you want.
And add pick, pick up within whatever amount of time? Okay, we'll bring that next time.
So what happens if they don't?
Yeah.
We'll send Mr. Mahal into them.
The town, yeah, gets a hold of the zoning guy and says, "Go get them." The zoning guy sends the offenders a letter. Hey, pick up your stuff here in violation of section blah, blah, blah.
But now we're in the sign business.
I'd like to say, thank you.
We've been in the sign business.
I think other, other towns have tried to do this and ran into first, ran into First Amendment issues and lawsuits and, uh, they, every one of them, let's try to, has abandoned their... I'm talking about, we are in the sign removal business.
Well, actually, we can't do that because it's considered larceny if the zoning guy picks up somebody else's property and removes it, which is what a sign would be if you bought it and replaced it.
Okay, so how do we enforce it?
We send the offender a nice letter saying you're in violation of this section. He doesn't do it, we send a cease and desist order, we turn it over to the town council.
So it becomes months anyway.
Well, I think, I think too, that we have candidates here that are pretty responsible. You know, I think that they're, you know, if you give them a call, they'll do it.
I don't think it's something that we can enforce.
It's difficult.
I can tell you for the Democrats, we drove all over town picking up signs, so if there's any left, it's because people bought them.
You know, over the years, different groups and different people are more responsive than others. It's that simple.
Well, on another note, I'd like to thank Jessica and Janet for all the hard work that they do, because there was a lot of copy in that we had to do. So thank you guys so much.
It was five days preparing 58 Shore Road, I think, wasn't it?
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Um, no doubt, no correspondence, anyone here from the public? I don't see anyone from public delegations. Mr. Mahal, do you have anything?
Yeah, we're steady, um, we're steady. That's, that's it. Things have cooled down. It's an election year and, and I, it's my opinion that during the national election, we, we see a reduction in applications. I think people kind of slow down. I think the additions have slowed down for some, not everybody, and it's just a little bit slower. And then I think, you know, and the, and the fall push is over, which is early, late August, September, October, get your projects and get them done so the builders can winterize and work inside. And then we'll get the spring push again in mid, well, probably starting in early March. And so we're steady at this time.
Have you heard anything about the roads, Belle? I know it's not anything to do with us, but I'm just curious. The traffic and, I mean...
I have, I, what I've actually heard...
And the exit over there, the...
Yeah, what I've actually heard, um, you know, by chance here or there, is some people are starting to comment on, well, now that it's finally, Flanders Road is almost operational, it's much easier to drive through it when they're not working. And when you can just plain drive through, I'm starting to hear some of that. Looks like it'll be vastly improved.
Well, we have seen a lot of accidents, like they report them and stuff. It's crazy, the amount of accidents that are at that exit.
Well, a lot of us avoid that area personally when we're on our, our personal journeys. And I, for one, do as well.
Right.
You know, are they, are they moving quickly? Actually, they are in, in, in the business, given the vastness of the project, but it's still a big project and a ways to go.
And it's looking like they actually blocked off that one entrance to Starbucks?
They opened it though, and then they blocked it again.
Yeah, we're, it's...
They put curbs in a sidewalk across there. But then they put monster blocks in.
Yeah, so we're not sure what they're doing there because technically that's what they, it's up to them what they choose to do. We shall see. We'll go from there, but yeah, that, it's, it could be better still. It's, we're not there yet, but you can kind of, I think, see the light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah, hopefully it gets better soon.
We're almost two years left.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, I thought they originally, it was supposed to be a four-year project.
If, somebody in the town, you know what Flanders, we've talked about it before, like a long time ago, you know, when you come into Flanders right there, four corners and it's right in front of the Walgreens Pharmacy there? Who's in charge of beautifying that area?
No one. Walgreens is responsible for their property, that's, it's done, they're supposed, they're supposed to maintain it. Then in front of their fence in the sidewalk area is the state right of way, so that's state land.
Okay.
But I think Walgreens mows it, mows it, as do most people who have that kind of frontage on a town or state, own the land that's adjacent to a road, they'll go in and mow it and maintain it.
And all those ugly, I just want to say this and then I'll shut up. All those ugly electrical things, we need to paint them like Willimantic did. Willimantic did this huge, uh, beautifying thing that they did to their town. And if you take a ride to Willimantic, take a ride, it's pretty fascinating. It's revitalized, it's amazing. They have this beautiful artwork on those things, not the big ones that are behind, over by Costco, but you know, when you see the regular ones. It'd be kind of cute to have them painted like some whale or a scallop shell or something. And that's what they did to theirs, they put their, for their theme for their town. It's absolutely beautiful. Okay, that's it, I'm done. I haven't seen it. I want to see some beautification.
Whose idea was the scallop shell on the bridge abutment?
I love that.
I will share, I meant at DEP, DOT, um, with the town engineer, not the current ones, when we started this project many, a long, long time ago, um, we went, must have been 25 people in the room, DOT, the developer, and they turned down the lights and started the PowerPoint. My engineer pokes me in the, on the shoulder and whispers in my ear and he's sitting behind me because there wasn't room at the primary table. And I said, "Excuse me, you know, I'm representing the town, but could you tell me why the plan you put up there is different than the one you gave us?" Oh, that was the end of that. Lights came up. At that meeting was their landscape people. They've started bringing them in and my, I pushed for the, the stone finish on the abutments and I, my view is and was sincerely, you know, in the west end of the state, they seem to do that all the time. What's wrong with us? Down here in southeastern Connecticut and so we were able to get some of that textured bridge abutment, et cetera. I did notice a scallop. I think they did that on our own, it was not me. Um, I don't know who it was or if they did it on their own, but I did notice that as well. I thought that was a nice little touch.
Well, those electrical boxes, I mean, we have a lot of talent in this town, young and old, you know. They could make them really nice, but if you drive down Willimantic, drive down the main street, I used to work there many years ago when, with the state, I can't believe the, how beautiful they are. They're colorful, they're very, artists, regular artists in their community did them. It's just absolutely fascinating. So I, I'd like to, hope somebody would do something like that here.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Foley, November 12th, are you going to play?
I haven't decided.
Okay. On December 10th, Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's about it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
All is in favor of aye.